A cease and whatever letter from me.
I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:00 PM. Please call the roll.
Ms. Pearson?
Present.
Mr. Schubert?
Here.
Ms. McCall?
Present.
Ms. Bennett? Mr. Carpenter?
Here.
Ms. Haley?
Here.
Ms. Stanford?
Here.
With six present, one absent, we have a quorum.
I now take a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. As we start each board meeting, it bears reminding. The mission of Rockford Public Schools is to collaboratively engage all students in an equitable first-class education for a changing world. Before going any further, thank you to Ms. Kim Pedersen and Erin Hill, who are working behind the scenes to produce the board's broadcast via YouTube livestream and Comcast Channel 20. We are now on to the petition and communication portion of our meeting where we invite the public to make comments. The board will not respond until comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you will be contacted in a timely manner by staff. Each speaker will be allowed no more than three minutes to address the board. It is not appropriate to discuss matters that will otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. If you look to your left, you will see two digital clocks. One shows the total time allotted to public comments and one shown the total time for each speaker. We thank you for your cooperation with our guidelines. First speaker for the evening, followed by is Ms. Flossie Hord, followed by Angel Brown. Ms. Angel Brown. Please make sure you turn the mic on, Ms. Flossie. Sister with the mic, please.
Okay, thank you, young man. I'm here to express my concern about the different facility scenarios that the board, I think, will vote on tonight. Plan A, the IB program expand currently at Conklin, STEAM at West, grade six through eight, joining students from attendance boundary and Kappa. B, IB, STEAM, IB five to eight, STEAM five to eight, Kappa five to eight, expand West. West repurpose as a special program school. Then IB at Karen Site Conklin, STEAM at Kennedy, six through eight, joining students from attendance boundaries. If I had to vote on one of these proposals, it would be C, because it's the only one that I see affect the students that's at the bottom of the barrel when it come to academic progress. McIntosh, Lewis, Lemon, and Ellis, students have the lowest performing test scores in reading and math, but I see nothing on the proposal that really address the students below the fifth grade. Now, you may have something in the works if you do, I haven't been informed. And then the other thing I'm concerned about, I hear people always talking about parents. We need parents. How can you get parents to come out and be a part of a process that they don't even feel welcome, invited, or have knowledge of? And the first thing you probably would say, well, you got media, you got cellphone, you got tablets, you got this, you got that. It's nothing more important and make people feel welcome than for you to actually engage in community meetings, informing parents and community about the different plans this school district have. I'm disappointed that school board representatives do not come out to the community and share information with their constituent, but they would rather say this is a collaborative effort. I don't expect a school board member from the east side to come on the west side and address the issues that parents have on the west side. I think that's why we elect school board members, for them to come out to our community and share different situations and encourage parents to come out. If we could get more participation from the school board, maybe we could get more participation from parents. I feel like with all the resources this school district have, they can put more money and more programs in McIntosh, Kennedy, Ellis, to bring up our children reading scores. You have gifted Kappa, Money Suri, you have the Promise Program, you have all the elitist program, but they are confined to a zone, meaning that most of the students that live on the west side can't even participate in those programs. And most of them that probably would are so far behind that they probably wouldn't even pass the requirement to participate. So really, at the end of the day-
Thank you, Ms. Hord, your time is up.
My time is up?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Well, I thank you for allowing me to speak, and really, I would invite you all to come to the west side of Rockford and participate-
Thank you, ma'am.
-in our RPS 205 school board forum. Thank you.
Hello, board members. My name is Angel Brown, and I come to you today because I appealed the decision for my son not to go back to high school, but for him to be acknowledged for the days that he had been absent for, for the notes that he have had from his doctor, from being, for missing school. My son do have asthma. The school gave my son asthma, by him and Helen does, from the vent for six months, and I feel that it's not fair for my son to have to be, to go to another school because of an issue that the school gave to him. My main concern is my son don't want to go back to high school, which I'm okay with that, but what I'm not okay with is if he did want to go back to high school, how would that affect him socially and emotionally? I was given no resources for my son. I feel as though with black children, especially young boys, it start with situations like this. If I wasn't a good mother, I'm sorry, if I wasn't a good mother, my son would be lost in the system, dropped off and picked up, and start to be a menace. Instead of picking up books, he probably end up picking up guns or being in the wrong crowd because nobody is not there for him. So, all I'm asking is that you give these kids social and emotional skills, you give the parents the skills that they need to advocate for our kids. And sometimes I wonder why the graduation is low. It's because some of the kids, my son is finna go in second grade, he been bullied since early childhood, and it happens like this. They displaced, they away from their friends, and there's certain things that they can't control, and y'all just dismiss them. And that's not fair for a second grader to be displaced, dismissed for something that y'all did to him. So, what I would like is you have to teach these kids about pre-op press, you got to teach these kids how to stand up for themselves, you got to teach these kids how to change laws. I'm not trying to come up here and just be combative all the time, but it hurts, it hurts me as a parent to see my son not want to go back to a school, and I'm only up here just advocating for my child and other kids too. And just because parents is not here is not because they don't care. It's sometimes if they do miss work, that mean there's food on the table, that means that's their car note, that means that's their rent, and sometimes they don't know how to deal with coming up here with you guys, because sometimes it's like preaching to the choir, so you guys, and you don't want to do choir director. And I get sick of coming up here, but I do it, because if I don't do it, who will? Thank you.
You're welcome. No, it's not. One moment, please. Just for public information, you have opportunity to complete a card prior to the start of the board meeting. Next speaker would be Mr. John Tack Bradley, followed by Ms. Carol Janber Smith.
Good evening, school board members, and most of all, the people that are watching, watching this today. Coming up on July the 22nd, we are gonna be making history. We are gonna be doing Scared Street. Those that's not familiar with Scared Street, what we gonna be doing is taking youth between the age of 15 and 30 to the jailhouse, where they gonna visit the inmates. After we leave the inmates, we gonna go upstairs to the courtroom, where we gonna have a talk with the judge, the state's attorney, the public defender. We also is looking forward to the Pride District being there. We also looking forward to Dr. Reed being in attendance there and Youth Service Network. What the subject we gonna be talking about when we speak with the judge and the different officials is talking about Project 2025 and also the bail bond. And also not just talking about the negative things, because the age group between 15 and 30 years old that's locked up in jail is us. And if we don't find alternative programs for them, for example, a lot of our kids can play sport, I mean, as good as sports, but they don't have the funds to play sport. I'm a pure example of that, because as a child, I was once the leader of the Pipe Town Gangster Cherokee Rangers, and I went from being a gang banger to being a productive individual by playing sports, and I didn't have no funds to play sport. But I also want to mention the fact that the Pride District is going to supply the food for us, so we gonna have a discussion at District One. I want to take a timeout and a pause to say, good luck, Earl Dyson Jr. on your trip, we gonna miss you. But one thing I can say, I'm asking Dr. Garrett, if when you replace Earl Dyson Jr., that you replacing with someone that could also been providing us with a school bus. We been taking kids to the Cyber Museum, we take them to Chicago, we take them to Wisconsin, we take them out the hood, show them something positive and what have you. I know Dr. Reed might still be around for a little bit longer, we not sure about that, but anyway, if you replace them to, replace them with someone that's still gonna work with Brother John and provide us with a school bus, so we can take the kids out the hood and show them that there's other positive things that's going on in our community. And guess what? I'm gonna end my conversation right there. By the way, we got 150 people signed up that want to go on this tour, but we only doing 25 at a time. So it's very important that we have somebody from Dr. Reed's office and the Pride District be there to talk to our young people, to give them alternative, that there is more, better places going from the education system to the prison system. No, let's go from education to sports and job. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
You're welcome, sir.
Good luck, and God bless you on your trip.
Thank you.
We gonna miss you.
Mr. Naylor, Ricky Naylor.
Good morning.
Ms. Smith will come back to you.
Good afternoon, board members. We just, the community is kind of wondering, you know, with this complaint that been filed with the Office of Superior Rights, why you guys have not responded. I mean, couldn't somebody in this building at least say, without getting yourself in trouble with your lawyers, just say, when you read it, just say, if it's true, say, we offended by what's in there. At least say that. You guys have not made any comment at all about it. All these papers could come asking y'all questions, and you say, we haven't heard, we haven't notified yet. You know what that complaint is, and you know where it is online. You could go in there and read it. Now, the one thing, the one thing these administrators are good at while they sitting here is advancing themselves. But the thing about it, when they advance themselves, get that power, they don't know how to use it. When you get power administrators, you use it for the greater good. You guys using that power just for yourselves, and this board is sitting here not holding you guys accountable. When is this board gonna rise to the occasion? You guys talk about the student code of conduct, there is also a school board member code of conduct too. So, I mean, conduct, and you specifically could read number nine and 10, where it said, if a parent or somebody got something to say to you guys, you gotta listen to them. You don't say, did you read the rules? Did you read the handbook? Doesn't matter about the handbook, it matters if they got a concern, you gotta listen to it. And also says that number nine or number 10, what it says, say, you got obligation to respect the authority superintendent for his advice to you guys, but at the same time, you can go against that advice and get your own rules. Now, you guys got a budget right now that still doesn't include any money for early childhood transportation. That money needs to be in there, and also your student service department keep saying about what all these kids doing all these bad things, but yet, when they came and spoke to you guys, and they didn't ask for any money for mentoring. You got a $550 million-plus budget, and you only got $51,000 allocated for mentoring service. What is that $51,000 gonna do for all these grade schools that the student service saying is out of the chain, making teachers quit and stuff like that? And then when they presented that idea to you guys, you didn't even ask them, say, what, did you get any influence from these black experts how to deal with these kids? No, they just, they just relying on white experts. So now you got a white administrator, administration trying to tell you black board members what to vote for and what not to vote for, and that's ridiculous. That's why, that's why it's more ridiculous that you got a, your school board is being, gonna complain against it for conduct done by majority white administrators. You guys still ain't saying, hey, wait, wait a minute, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta get this straightened out. So what I'm saying is, if these guys ain't got that money put in that budget, you telling me, say, okay, y'all got two choices. You go cut $7 million from that budget, or you borrow that money for mentors and early childhood transportation. I think that ballpark could be about $7 million. And that's not radical, that's business. So I mean, if you guys want these meters to back up off you guys, then rise to the occasion.
We are now on, I'm so sorry. Mr. Board Smith, thank you for your patience, I appreciate you.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm part of a small but mighty group that believes reading fluency to be foundational to RPS 205. We know that children who do not read proficiently by fourth grade are four times more likely to drop out or fail to graduate on time than proficient readers. For almost two years, we've been reading about literacy, particularly that of K through three, and speaking with people who have been involved in strategies to increase the literacy of their students. It is clear to us that pandemic-era remote learning drastically affected literary skills. It is clear to us that gaps persist between student groups, including by race and family income level. It is clear to us that a new approach to literacy instruction has been and continues to be needed. Our conversations and research have led us to believe that a successful literacy intervention program has three main components. The first component is prevention, the foundational instruction that prepares all students to read regardless of risk factors or skill levels. It may include teacher professional development and coaching, curriculum selection, or school-level changes, such as group size or teacher-pupil ratios. High-quality preschool environments are an example of programming that contributes to strong early literacy skills and to proficiency in early elementary, particularly among English language learners and students from low-income backgrounds. The second component is intervention, that identifies individual needs and provides targeted supports for students with reading difficulties, and may include an individualized plan with small group or one-on-one instruction. The third component is assessment, that identifies students' reading challenges and monitors their progress. More than state and federal testing, classroom assessments administered K through three can be situationally appropriate and brief, but should be routine as they provide actionable feedback to teachers and families. There are many ways that you, as a board, can support the development and implementation of literacy strategies, such as creating a literacy policy that includes goals, literacy audits, and progress monitoring; establishing a culture of literacy that includes creating a literacy leadership team; providing professional learning opportunities that include coaching and practical learning for teachers and faculty. We are grateful for your work on the board and urge you to view district-wide literacy programs that increase the fluency of our students to be one of your highest priorities. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our speakers. We are now on the items that proceed through Stakeholders Committee. Is there a motion and a second to approve Items 3A?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Schubert?
Yes.
Ms. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
We are now on items that proceed through planning and development. Is there a motion and a second to approve for A?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? There is. So, this is regarding the master's facility plan, correct? And so I have some concerns, but before I express my concerns, I want to make it abundantly clear to the general public. We had listening sessions regarding the master's facility plan. We welcome community members to come to collaboratively work together among their neighbors, friends, family, relatives, to attend the sessions regarding the master's facility plan. There were some, they heard Vice President McCall have reported out multiple times in regards to the master facility plan. Our meetings are viewed via YouTube and Channel 20. We encourage community members to be engaged in the flow of the meetings, so you'll be fully aware of discussions and what is going on. And so I want to make it clear that opportunity have been present for community engagement. So my concern with the master's facility plan is, after, I knew that there, it felt like something was missing, so... And I remember there was discussion, Mr. Phillips explained why we chose the DRL group, and I understand why. But what I found concerning is DRL group advertise master facility plan through the lens of equity. And we all understand that when we're meeting the needs of equity, meeting equity needs, that we are considering those that are most disadvantaged. And my question, and so we had a steering committee, and it comprised of community members, two board members. So my question, and to whoever wants to answer, because the chief of equity, diversity, inclusion, or belonging, however you want to look at, was not on the steering committee. And so it's difficult to support the master's facility plan when Kennedy, who is, it is very evident, need attention and is the most disadvantaged. And that creates a problem when we invest in equity, and yet our master's facility plan lacks equity. Mr. Phillips, will you please explain the why equity is missing as defined in the most disadvantaged in our master's facility plan?
So, I think the first question I'd like to answer is, Jason Pope, Director of Recruitment, represented the Diversity, Inequity, and Inclusion Department for Dr. Reed and his group. We did reach out to Dr. Reed to determine, because we felt it was important that somebody from that group represented, was represented, and Jason was selected to be a part of that, part of that group. So that's who was representing us from that standpoint. As far as equity being included, we provided about five different scenarios to the steering committee, that the steering committee reviewed, discussed, walked through with the guiding principles that they had developed during the process. In that, in those scenarios, a number of those scenarios did include Kennedy as an option. And as the steering committee reviewed those options and discussed them, they felt best and decided that they were bringing forward, or wanted to bring forward as their recommendation, Scenario A. They also brought forward two other scenarios, B and C, I believe, and we discussed those during our board retreat. So, I don't think it's, I wouldn't say there wasn't equity involved in this process by any means, and I would let maybe the board members speak to, again, why Scenario A was selected as their recommendation.
So, the, and I see your light, Ms. McCall and Mr. Carpenter. So they did speak as to the why, and they shared with that at the last meeting. So if, through the, unless, so you can, of course, repeat what you said for the sake of public knowledge, but I definitely want to touch the equity piece.
Thank you. I just want to, the idea that Kennedy wasn't considered is not accurate, or that it's not being considered in the scenario that's before us.
Before you go, before you continue on, Mr. Carpenter, thank you. I want to be clear that it's not that Kennedy was not considered, we understood that Kennedy was considered, because Kennedy was one of the options. I'm trying to, that piece is under- I'm trying to, that piece is understood. I'm trying to understand definition of equity and what our district have defined as equity, why it wasn't the selection. That's, we just bring it on in based on equity. So finish your statement. Thank you.
The proposal calls for millions of dollars to be spent at each of the middle schools. Kennedy is $3.5 million, almost $3.5 million. It's the most of all middle schools other than West. The other middle schools are $2 million, 1.9 million, 2.1 million. Kennedy is 3.5 million, almost 3.5 million. West is a little bit more than that because it involves moving steam, I think, to West. So it's a little bit more than Kennedy, but Kennedy is getting more money than any other middle school other than West. So I'm going to let Ms. McCall follow up on that.
Ms. McCall, Vice President McCall?
Did you have anything to say to that?
No.
Okay. When you're saying, so in the simplest of forms, ways, we were tasked with developing a facilities master plan that's attached to a certain amount of funds that was allotted. Okay. So everything was, you know, reviewed, different scenarios came, you know, back and forth. The best option was selected to be brought to the board, and that was as a result of taking into consideration the previous master plan, the previous improvements and updates through each school. We had given information for all of the schools and how much, what has been updated and upgraded and everything, everything, all the attention that was done facilities-wise to each building. So to me, saying that Kennedy is not being treated equitable is just not true. The facilities master plan is tasked on, you know, not programming, but it's tasked on providing resources and things for the facilities. When you're saying, and this is to me, when you're saying that you feel that Kennedy is not being treated equitable, it seems to me like it's almost on a programmatic level, right? So what the committee was tasked to do as far as maximizing the funds that we have, the 180, what was it, million? 180, and to make sure that every school is getting attention. Every single school is getting attention. Mr. Carpenter just read out how Kennedy is receiving more than, you know, the other middle schools. So I'm just a little confused as to, are you talking programmatically or what? Because if you, to me, there's tons of improvements that needs to be done to all the schools, right? But we only have a certain amount of money. Unless there's another way to fund or get more money to do more work, then that's what, you know, the committee, that's what we would like to do, but we don't, we were confined by the amount of money that you have to get this stuff completed. Every single building is having some, is getting some of this money that's going into this facility master plan. If it's not, I mean, I'm sorry, strike that. That's it.
Okay. So why don't you elaborate on when you further explain program, programmatically? Yeah, mhm. That was the terminology you used, because I see program.
So programmatically, like what program is housed at the school, or, you know, what type of school is, that it's going to be? That's not on the table for the facilities master plan. The facilities master plan is strictly for the facilities.
So.
I mean, am I, Mr. Phillips?
I'm not, I'm not questioning the monies. And when, so let's go back, let's go all the way back. How does RPS 205 define equity? Superintendent Jarrett, please answer that.
Sure. I'd be glad to. You know, the way we define equity as a school district is we want to eliminate predictability by ZIP code. The facilities master plan, and what that means on a personal level is ensuring that across the country, we struggle with predictability based on ZIP code. It's not unique to Rockford, but Rockford certainly has that issue as well. And what we, I believe collectively aspire to do is do everything we can to make community investments, yes, facilities investment, yes, programmatic investments, to ensure that happens. When I look at our facilities master plan from the lens of equity, I look at what Mrs. McCall cited about the school-by-school expenditures. That is one way to look at it. I also want to reiterate the commitment that the schools team, Dr. Reed and I in the Cabinet have made to talk about how we can invest in Kennedy, because one way you can invest in Kennedy or any of the schools in our district is to combine special programs or things like that. That was not what the facilities committee elected to do while that was an option. That does not mean we cannot come together as a leadership community and as a community as a whole, more importantly, and have conversations about what we can do to support Kennedy Middle School and help them. And so I am very committed to working with Dr. Reed, to working with the principal supervisor, as well as the principal supervisor, as well as the principal from Kennedy Middle School, to come together, to report back to the board about things that we have already done to invest in Kennedy. Kennedy is the most per pupil spending in the district right now. So that is another way you can show equity, is are you spending more money in a district? That is something a district can control. What we are talking about is equity of outcome. And equity of outcome is also very important, but that is something that takes time and investment to do. So we are very committed to analyzing what the facilities plan is doing, analyzing what we are already doing to invest in the students at Kennedy Middle School, which is the lens in which we're talking to this specifically, but also all of our schools, and then ultimately make recommendations to the board about any new investments that we need to make or reposition within that spending. But when I look specifically at the issue of Kennedy, there are two things that really jump out. One, the per, the per-school spending from a facilities master plan historically, as well as currently, shows that there is significant investment in the campus at Kennedy. Two, we are making the greatest investment per pupil spending of any school in the district, and that is because the board and the school district has focused on ensuring that schools that have the biggest challenges are getting the most investment. That is not unique to Kennedy. If you look at our district across the board, how we spend our money, we take great pride in the fact that schools that have the highest percentage of low-income students and the least experienced teachers are incentivized with additional budget dollars. Dr. Brown and his team ensures that. We ensure that as a board and a leadership team. So not only will we continue to make those investments in our schools to ensure we make progress towards equity results, we will continue to give special attention to Kennedy and report back to the board on what other things we can do to help our students there. Unfortunately, Kennedy is not the only school in our district that is struggling with academic achievement. We are really proud of the results that we're seeing on a preliminary basis. I think the board and the community is going to be happy to see significant literacy improvements based on our preliminary test scores, significant improvements in graduation rate, on-track rate, and some of the core metrics I'm accountable for and we are collectively accountable for. And that ultimately is going to be the measure over time, is are we helping students that are furthest from opportunity eliminate that predictability by ZIP code and see those great results happen? So I think the Facilities Master Planning Committee, that was very well represented by the board, did an amazing job with some really significant resource limitations, and I am committed to continuing the work of equity by investing in Kennedy and all of our schools that need additional support moving forward, Board President Pearson. I think certainly the right question to ask, how are we going to support Kennedy? But I also want to be clear that the Facilities Master Plan decisions is only one piece of that investment. Budgeting, strategic support around the school improvement plan, and wraparound community services are also going to be an extremely important part of that, and I am committed to supporting in all of those areas and continuing to report to the board on our progress, not only at Kennedy, which has been specifically mentioned, but in all of our schools, because that ultimately is the vision. How do we get to a place over time through sustained effort and resource investment where ZIP code is less predictable in our community? We can't fix our whole country with this problem, but we can start with that work right here, and I'm proud of the work we have done with this board and continue to do to make sure those investments are greatest where the need is greatest. Thank you.
Vice President McCall?
I'm sorry.
Thank you very much for explaining that. So I want, again, to be, the reason why I pulled this is because, you know, former board members often talked about word salad or, you know, skillful use of words, and I just want to be, I've never questioned, I've never questioned the dollar spent. We know that the low, Kennedy has low senses. Something has to happen about that, because that's a contributing factor as to why we're spending more money there. Okay? So let's not send an appearance of something that is not fully accurate. So that is a contributing factor as to why we're spending more money at Kennedy. So when I asked about equity, and I shared with this, I shared this with Dr. Reed, and I find it very interesting how, when we go back, and I wanted to make sure that I was really understanding, and I, and believe it or not, I do have a very clear understanding as to why the scenario was chosen. However, as I, as I listened to the board retreat meeting, I don't recall Mr. Pope being present at the retreat. Did I miss that? Okay. So he, but he was the equity representative on the steering committee, correct? And so I'm trying to understand from, did he report out what Dr. Reed is otherwise engaged, but?
So one piece that I did miss, Dr. Reed was part of the administrative committee that on a weekly basis met with the LR Group and reviewed what was being discussed at the steering committee, as well as progress throughout the facilities master plan.
Thank you. So in, at the retreat, Dr. Reed stressed very passionately about the support of Kennedy and making Kennedy a priority. And it was said, you know, we will have conversation about Kennedy. And I'm going to be very honest, a conversation, we've been having conversations, and this is, let me say this, I understand that we have done some equity work, but I need board members to understand as well, because I know we have different perspectives. But when you, when you contract a group who advertise, yes, and I'm going to continue to use equity in the sense of making those that are least advantaged a priority, that appears to be missing from the master's facility plan, when the group that we hired advertised master facility plan through the lens of equity, that our steering committee did not grasp that in supporting the scenarios. So Kennedy could have, we could have invested special programming at Kennedy. So I just wanted to have this conversation, because I wanted the public to know my why and why I cannot support the master's facility plan with the concerns, the layer of concerns that I have around targeted equity. Mr. Carpenter?
Thank you. I just want to, the facilities master plan, at the very beginning of the, or the steering committee, developed guiding principles. Two of those, I think, they don't say the word equity, but they relate to equity. They say, "Our schools will reflect the community to promote a sense of belonging, and our district will balance the needs of all students, staff, and programs, and how various learning models can work with existing school facilities." And those guiding principles led every discussion, every meeting. We started off with those guiding principles, going over them. So I don't think that, to say that we didn't, that the steering committee didn't get equity, I don't think is fair to the steering committee, and I don't think it reflects what happened at the steering committee meetings.
Okay. Ms. Stanford?
I just want to say that I don't share your opinion. I believe that this plan that's coming forward to us is equitable. Kennedy has been discussed, and I have been assured personally by Dr. Reed and Dr. Jarrett that there is going to be continued support at Kennedy and continued investigation at Kennedy into why they're not succeeding, and that we are going to come up with a plan to help them. And the facility master plan is not necessarily the place to do that. They are getting, they're building upgraded the way that they need it, obviously, with the $3.5 million, but that's not going to help the issue at Kennedy. We have to get to the bottom of what's going on at Kennedy and come up with a plan going forward. I don't think throwing a special program in there right at this moment is the answer. I think we need to figure out, and I, and again, I've been assured that that's going to happen.
Vice President McCall?
I just wanted to also agree with what Mr. Carpenter said. You know, that was the leading charge before each meeting, even when we were with the community, you know, in the community meetings as well. We have several people in the gallery who are also on the committee and who attended some of those as well. And just to piggyback off of what Mrs. Stanford said, the facilities master's plan is not the place where we look to figure out how, and I'm going to go back to programmatically, solve some of the issues at Kennedy. And when, and I also want to also point out, there was a scenario where some programs and things could be put at Kennedy, and all that is all listed as why or, you know, how it can be successful. So also, I don't want it to be stated that Kennedy was not given an equitable chance when there is a scenario on there where, that puts some of the programs at Kennedy as well for uses. So I just want to be clear that that's what happened.
Okay. So and I, we all understand that we don't have to agree with each other. We respectfully agree to disagree. And so I'm going to state again, I'm going to state again, I never said that the steering committee didn't consider Kennedy. I said the steering committee did not make Kennedy the recommendation. And if we are going to partner with organizations, and again, I advocate for Kennedy, because when we look at the other schools, it is the greatest school in need.
That's right.
Please, Ms. Flossy, no outbursts. Thank you. I appreciate that. So we will agree to disagree, and going back to the words that wasn't said, but it was supposed to be understood as equity, again, don't be, why do we have to avoid the word Like, there's, Mrs., Vice President?
I, again, I don't want it out there, the word equity was not avoided, you know, everybody put together.
Was it there?
Everybody, I'm not going to rewind back to.
Okay.
...months ago, in the final statement that was agreed upon, you know. It wasn't like it was intentionally or maliciously saying, "No equity." So I just wanted to make sure that the community knows that. It just happened to be putting together a mission statement, sort of, say, type of a environment where we put together... You get the inputs from everybody that's involved. Unfortunately, or not unfortunate, I don't know, the word equity itself just didn't come up.
Just didn't... Just wasn't there.
Just didn't come up. So it wasn't like, you know, it was... Whatever you do, don't say the word equity. I don't want it presented like that. That's not how it was presented. We came up with the best statement that best described what the needs were, and it has an equitable meaning to it. So that's just... I just want to make sure it wasn't... We didn't put up there, use every word but equity.
Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you. We spent 10 minutes trying to figure out what equity meant tonight, so...
Exactly.
Putting the word equity in there or using words to describe what we mean, I would rather use words to describe what we mean than say we have to have a magic word in the statement.
No magic word, but that, you know, we use parentheses all the time.
I also... I want to thank the steering committee members.
Me too.
I was proud of the plan and the process that we used. Like you stated, we did have a lot of community input. We also got a lot of input from staff and other district employees. And we... I'm proud of the work that we did to implement a lot of that input from a lot of community members, a lot of staff members. And I think that the proposed facilities master plan reflects that input, and I encourage everybody to vote for it tonight, and I hope that we do. Thank you.
Well, there was a consensus that you all already decided at the retreat, that you selected the scenario that you did. So that...
We selected the scenario to bring to the board for approval.
Right. And it was later shared with me that the consensus was made to select that scenario. Because I had originally asked, would the scenarios... Attorney Holey, did I not ask you, would the scenarios be listed on the agenda? And your response was it was a consensus to go with scenario A. I think I don't have the sheet in front of me.
But the consensus was done at the committee at the whole, right?
But it was... I mean, it was a discussion. A consensus is not a vote. That's something that we really need to get away from. And I think that when you listen to information, I mean, you don't have to ask the boards, the board members, to support the vote. They already support your scenario.
We're here to vote on it tonight, so...
Exactly.
I'm asking to vote. I'm hoping everyone will vote yes for it. I'm encouraging that. We're having discussion before the vote.
Exactly.
So I think that's when you make that statement. So that's where I... Why I said that.
Mrs. Haley.
I do want to state that as far as the retreat is concerned and the committee at the whole, the scenarios were presented before us. I think we had ample opportunity, and we did go through each scenario in detail. And I think each board member truly considered each scenario and what was best for the district and our students in this district and for the students at Kennedy. And scenario A came out to be the scenario that I thought was best. I'm not sure, you know. Maybe there was consensus, but I know what I supported as far as the scenarios that were presented. As far as equity is concerned, I think that equity was considered when you're... As far as when we're looking at the location at Kennedy as opposed to the other locations that were considered. But when we consider equity, we also have to consider not just monies that are going into the facilities master plan. I think, again, programmatically, we will continue to keep attention at Kennedy so that we can make that... The programs that are going there, the facilities is in a place where it supports the programs that... And it supports growth of additional programming. So I just want to make it clear that I felt that we had ample opportunity, and we reviewed each scenario and had... And made decisions based on the best... What was best for the students in the district.
Thank you, Mrs. Haley. I appreciate that. We also had a discussion at the other... At the committee at the whole, of which no members other than Ms. McCall and Mr. Carpenter participated in. I certainly, again, I respect the views of other board members, and sometimes you just have difficult conversations. I'm going to stand on what I support. And I've always said from the beginning, sometimes you have to stand alone in a matter, and I'm willing to do that. And yes, we will keep an eye on Kennedy and make sure that Kennedy needs and get what they... What they need to be in order to be successful. I do think that we have missed an opportunity to have special programming at Kennedy, and it would not have been... It would have changed some zones, and the population would have grown, no doubt. I think that there were many advantages of having special programming at Kennedy, but I appreciate the conversation. It was worth having yet again. But again, I wanted to express and have this discussion further to make it very clear why I stand where I stand. And yes, we will definitely be revisiting how we'll be handling Kennedy going forward. Please call the roll.
Mr. Schubert.
So just to be clear, we're voting on option A right now?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Ms. Pearson?
No.
The motion passes with five yeses, one no, one absent.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second to approve item 4B?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Ms. Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Schubert?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
We are now on board policies that proceed through governance. Is there a motion and a second to approve board policies set forth in section 5?
So moved.
Are there any board policies in section 5 board members wish to have pulled?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Are there any policies board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Ms. Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Schubert?
Yes.
Ms. McCall?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
We are now on the consent portion of our meeting. May I have a motion and a second to approve items listed in section 6?
So moved.
Are there any consent items board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Mrs. McCall? Please... Please call the roll.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Ms. Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Schubert?
Yes.
Ms. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
May I have a motion and a second to approve items in section 7, Planning and Development Committee?
So moved.
Are there any consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate Getting adjusted to diligent. 7C should be SOAR. So I just have a question. It was... There was a question asked on... Yes. Please call the roll.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Ms. Pearson?
Well, hold on. Items not pulled, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Schubert?
Yes.
Ms. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Thank you. Consent item C have been pulled for separate consideration. Is there any discussion? Yes, there is. Just... Well, questions, anyway. So there was a question asked on discipline that would be coming to the board from SOAR. Would we be getting that information? Can you explain the process of that? Will it be any different than what we're doing now? Because I thought you said it wouldn't be going before the board. Can you clarify that?
So let me just make sure I understand what you're asking. So in terms of student code of conduct violations?
Correct.
Okay. So our intention is to support students before we get to repeated... Repeated code of conduct violations that you would see. That is, our intention with this program is to support early and intensively so that we do not get to repeated behavioral incidents for our youngest students.
Okay. But in the event that you do, those will be coming to the board, correct?
In the event that they do and that they are appropriate to come to you, yes.
Okay. And the other question is the... How the population... What would the determining factor be? Because I also understood you to say not every student would necessarily be accepted into SOAR Academy.
Sure. I mean, there are some violations that we would keep students at the zone school for elementary, that we do that anyway right now. And if we're not seeing additional behavioral concerns with a student, if it's just one event, we may consider leaving them... Keeping them at a zone school location. So we would make those determinations with the building MTSS teams. So as the student, you know, if a student is having behavioral concerns and they're moving through that MTSS team and the recommendations are made to need an additional, more intensive support, that's when my team, Student Services and Alternative Learning, would come together with that building to, one, ensure that all of the interventions were exhausted, appropriate interventions were exhausted, and make sure that that is the right location for a student.
Okay, very good. But is there any... Will there be ever an occasion where a student is not allowed to SOAR Academy?
Weapon violations, that the student used a weapon.
And defined as it is currently?
Is it in terms of an expulsion? It is not an expulsion program. We have the online digital program for student... Elementary students who are expelled, and that will continue.
Thank you very much. Please call the roll.
Ms. Pearson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Schubert?
Yes.
Ms. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
May I have a motion and a second to approve the items listed in section 8 Governance Committee?
So moved.
Are there any consent?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any consent items in section 8 that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Please call the roll.
Mr. Schubert?
Yes.
Ms. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Ms. Pearson?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
We are now on closed session consent agenda, including workers' compensation settlement agreement. Workers' Compensation Settlement Agreement SS. The first one was LR. Appointment of Claudia Zumba as 10-month elementary dean assigned to Roland Green. Appointment of Sally Maderas as 10-month elementary assistant principal assigned to IB Conklin. Appointment of Gerald Scott Erdman as 10-month assistant principal assigned to West Middle School. Appointment of Julie Chandler as 12-month early childhood principal assigned to Nash Hold Early Childhood Center. Appointment of Brian Lamb as 12-month elementary principal assigned to Ellis Elementary School. An HR organizational report. May I have a motion and a second to approve the items in section 9 Closed Session Consent?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any closed session consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Please call the roll.
Ms. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Ms. Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Schubert?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
We are now on student discipline, EIA's. May I have a motion and a second to approve the items in section 10, student EIA's?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any EIA's that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Please call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Ms. Pearson?
Yes.
Mr. Schubert?
Yes.
Ms. McCall?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
The next on our agenda is a superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett, floor is yours.
Thank you. And I just want to once again reiterate support for the thousands of community members that, in one way or another, did participate in this process, and give a specific shout out to Mike Phillips for all the extra work he did along the way, for all of the board members for your multiple months of engagement, but specifically a shout out to both Paul and Tiana for the extra time you put in on many nights. So thank you to everyone on the board, the community, and the administration that came together. Certainly appreciate all of the very tough conversations we've had along the way. And I can assure the community that I remain committed to partnering with our entire community to ensure that we continue to make progress on equitable outcomes for students in this district. It is so important, and it will continue to be the focus, I know, of this board and of our administration.
Provides opportunity for board members to discuss... Are there any board member comments, action steps, other business, new business, or agenda recommendations, or any other matters to discuss? Vice President McCall?
I just wanted to bring to the attention that on... Yesterday at the Republican National Convention, we had a former Auburn Knight student and Kappa student, John Stanford. He sang the National Anthem and opened up the convention. Again, that's a... He's a son of Anita Stanford from a Ponsfrenner home. But he sang, and he opened up the national convention by singing the National Anthem. So I want to shout out that, you know, Auburn Knights are everywhere. And some of our talented students. I can't remember what year he graduated. It's not been too far along, but... So I just wanted to make that announcement, and that's it.
Anyone else? Anyone else? If there's no further business before the board, I'll take a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All have a good night.
Yeah, get out. It's over.